I would like to call the Monday, June 21st, 2021 Orange Board of Education meeting to order at 7:08. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Dr. Scarpetti for a moment.
Good evening, Board members. Before we start with the Pledge of Allegiance, we just got some sad news that a reading aide at Racebrook School passed away, Nancy Shapiro. And if it's okay, on the behalf of the Board, I think, a moment of silence out of respect for Nancy and her family and all of Racebrook. If we could have a please stand for a moment of silence. Again, we extend our thoughts and prayers to the Shapiro family and the whole entire Racebrook community. And then we could begin with the pledge, if we may. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Susan, would you be kind enough to read the mission statement, please?
I'd be happy to. I need glasses, too. The Orange Elementary School District recognizes that the education of each child is the shared responsibility of every member of our community. Our goal is to inspire and empower each student to achieve academic excellence, embrace social and individual responsibility, and lead with integrity. We believe all individuals should be valued and treated with respect. Together, we will make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Public participation, do we have any public participation? No? Consent agenda, I am looking for a motion to accept the items under the consent agenda. The items are the regular session meeting minutes from the May 17th, 2021 Board of Education meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes from the May 17th, 2021 Board of Education meeting? Ken? Second? Betty? Any further discussion on the minutes? All in favor? opposed? Stained? All right, we'll move right into the superintendent's report. Dr. Scarpetti, please.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe. As every Board member knows, we've had to be very adaptive this past year. One of the things that we've had to be adaptive about is honoring our students. In the board update that we sent, we shared our students that received the superintendent's recognition. I believe all of you have a bio that hopefully you had an opportunity to read, if not. But I decided to start the superintendent's presentation because we shared with the students that we'll be talking about them. Sadly, because of where we are and again, finalizing the year and finalizing with the mitigating factors, we typically have a nice reception and have the families here to honor them. So we did a little different. We actually honored them at their promotion ceremonies on June 10th, and it was great to honor all our students. But I'd like to, on their behalf, and if they're watching home, kids, hope you're enjoying the summer. We'd like to acknowledge them. So Orange Public Schools is pleased to announce the recipients of the Connecticut, I'm sorry, the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendent's Student Recognition Award. And again, I apologize in advance if I'm mispronouncing any names. Kalina Does, Shri Agarg, Inak Lu from Peck Place School, Ryan Leapley, Jason Chen, and Gracie Banel from Racebrook School, and Ava Storrs, Charlotte Wallace, and Lisu Melville from Turkey Hill School. The criteria for the CAPS award are leadership, service to the school, academic prowess relative to ability, and service to others in the community. So again, all those students, we'd like to acknowledge them. In addition to the CAPS award, we had, the Orange Public Schools was pleased to announce the following students, recipients of the South Central Area Superintendent's Association Award. Mia Martier and Michael Baker from Peck Place School, Charlotte Keane and Niket Vallabai Zou, I'm going to try it in a better, Vallabai Zouzla from Racebrook School, Tegan Ron and McKenna Kirk from Turkey Hill School. And the criteria for the CAPS award are community service and service to other academics' achievements and leadership in the school community, and active participant in the arts. So let's acknowledge those students, too. Boys and girls, we hope you're watching at home, and again, as I met with you individually, we are incredibly honored for your service, what you've done for the community, and wish you well as you proceed into the middle school. So we wish you all the best. In addition, we typically have a type of reception with when we honor a principal. Again, it's much different during this time, but we did want to make sure that even though she was appointed last month, we wanted to make sure she was in attendance. So joining us today is Catherine McNeil, who is the Racebrook Principal, and we are pleased to announce the appointment of Mrs. Catherine McNeil as the new Principal of Racebrook School. Mrs. McNeil comes to us from Stratford Public School, where she served as the Principal of Stratford Academy-Johnson House. Prior to that role, Mrs. McNeil was the Assistant Principal of Stratford Academy and the Principal of the Institute of Professional Practice School. In addition to that, prior to that, Mrs. McNeil taught for 18 years in Stratford at the elementary school level. Mrs. McNeil received her undergraduate degree from Providence College. Afterwards, she attended Sacred Heart University, where she obtained her master's degree in elementary education, and then she attended Southern Connecticut State University for a six-year degree in educational leadership. Again, we want to thank all the people who are engaged in this interview process. The responses shared through the survey were extremely helpful, since these provided guidance in assisting us with the interview sessions. Mrs. McNeil's experience, knowledge, and dedication to students coupled with a strong desire to commit to connecting with Racebrook families became evident through this whole entire process. We look forward to her joining, and again, we'd like to honor and welcome her right now.
I'd like to thank the Orange Board of Education, Dr. Scarpetti, Dr. Russo, and the administrative staff of Orange Public Schools for having me here tonight. I'm truly honored to be addressing you as the new Principal of Racebrook School. I am so looking forward to working closely with all of you during the coming school year. My experiences in elementary education have included classroom teacher, coach, assistant principal, and principal. In my opinion, there is no better place to be than an elementary school. Schools are places of hope. Our youngest learners provide us with a window to the future. It is, in turn, our responsibility to ensure their academic success. It is our great honor to play a role in their social success as well, to assist in helping our students become global citizens who can navigate this ever-changing world. I look forward to working closely with the Racebrook PTA and providing students and families with activities that support the school community and a positive climate. A few weeks ago, I had the pleasure of visiting Racebrook and meeting many staff members and students. Everyone was so kind and welcoming. There is such a positive, joyful feeling you get as soon as you walk through the doors. I am thrilled to begin our work together. Again, I thank you for the opportunity to serve this community. Have a good night. Thank you.
So a little different than we're used to with the reception, but we hope to see Mrs. McNeil in future board meetings and have her start in July. And again, boys and girls, we're sorry that we weren't able to do the reception for you, but we hope that you enjoy the summer and honored you this evening. In addition to my report, Board members, I want to give a personnel update. I'll be further talking in the board business with the grant, the ARP-ESR grant that I shared with all of you. But currently, right now, our positions are summer school, sped teacher, summer school, sped peer professional aides, any summer school opportunities that we have, and again, we're going to go into some details what we're doing for summer school, substitute teachers, substitute custodians, and security monitors, and kitchen aides that if we're going to be looking for in the fall. In addition to that, we're actually expecting some teacher positions to be available, and as that unfolds, we'll be sharing with the entire Board those positions. But we are expecting some teacher positions that will be open. I'll be in communication with all of you and Mrs. Brown. And before we go into the board business, again, I want to hit the students so they didn't have to wait throughout the meeting, but I actually want to start with, believe it or not, we made it. At last month's meeting, you may recall, we had zero students and faculty that were not quarantined or anyone with the COVID-19 update page, and we were hoping that we would not get any more cases, which we did. We did not. We have continually thanked a variety of stakeholders throughout the year, and as you could imagine, why. Each and every one of them made the difference of what year we could have had to the year that we actually had. And now from the bottom of my heart, no matter what group of people or individuals we have mentioned, they did all they could do for one reason, alone for our kids. So thank you again for all of you who contribute to the success, support, and guidance to the Orange District. We will be forever grateful, and thank you for everyone. And again, I know throughout this whole entire time, I've mentioned specific people, groups. I'm not going to do that again, just in case if I miss someone. But I think it goes without saying, and I think it was quoted at one of our other meetings, there were only 3% districts that opened in person, full-time, every day, and we happen to be one of that. And that is not boasting, that is just crediting and at a moment where the tribals, the trials and tribulations that we've had is to be acknowledged because it took a community to do that. And again, thank you for everyone for their contribution. And that's the end of my report, Mr. Crowe.
Any comments or questions for Dr. Scarpetti? Susan?
I'm at Dr. Scarpetti. I would like to thank you, your team, the teachers, the staff, for a fantastic year. We know it's all been very difficult and challenging in numerous ways, and everybody made it through, and I think you all need to be commended for that. So thank you.
Thank you. Sumartima Riccio, I happened to be able to participate as a Board member in the Peck Place stepping up ceremony, and three of the students spoke, young Mr. Bosick, Ms. Remigio, and Ms. Martier, and kind of a common denominator across their comments and speeches, which were very precocious and well-done, was just what school had meant to them. And being a full-time teacher in a situation that was not in-person full-time, I can't state enough what those students described as being meaningful and having participated in the stepping up ceremonies. Last year, which were, you know, the best, I think, really, we could do, it was largely a drive-through. I thought Principal Beliciano and the Peck Place staff did a tremendous job in getting all of those students to be able to graduate as a class, and what they're leaving there with all of our students having been in-person all year is a tremendous gift. If you have looked around the state, communities throughout the state, other communities were not able to realize this. Took a tremendous commitment on, you know, there's an old cliche, it takes a village, but over the summer, the Board of Finance stepped up with a number of funds for improved ventilation. We had a great, I think, team led by Dr. Scarpetti, as well as the Principals and staff. And then certainly, the tremendous job on the teaching staff, some of whom were really asked to do often dual teaching for students who might be in quarantine or might be tuning in remote, which, in my own firsthand experience as a teacher, is almost impossible. And I certainly want to just recognize the tremendous and heroic efforts of the teachers as well. So I think, you know, this year was challenging for everyone, and yet, I think there's a lot to be proud of, and I appreciate Dr. Scarpetti and his team, and I think a lot of that positive momentum started with the decision Mr. Crowe made in July, which is, we need to get back in here and working in person. And I know Mr. Young may have a good chuckle at this, but I was actually thrilled to be at an in-person board meeting over the summer because I think that really helped create a lot of positive momentum and achievement. And again, I think there was often a kind of a moving target as the state kept changing some of regulations and policies, and I think having these students in person was not only beneficial for them, had a great economic impact in our community with parents being allowed to work as well. And so I say kudos to the team. Thank you.
If I may, Chairman, perhaps at the veiled invitation of Charles, but words that I thought many times and just had not ever said and should have said sooner, but no better time than now, Doctor, is to express, you know, my personal respect, appreciation, and regard for you and our administrative team and our staff and teachers for the bravery and the strength and the intelligence that you and your team implemented and were willing to implement. You actually, you led by example. You weren't a follower. You showed the rest of the state how we could do it right, and you saved our kids from such an even worse experience than, according to 97% of the other kids in the districts in our public schools of the state had. So I just really want to thank you for what I know it took to, if I say stick your neck out, but take, be willing to do what others weren't, do what you knew to be right and was consistent with the information you had and with the support of our community, to give to our kids what they really needed. And that was the ability to go to school and feel just a little bit more human and to have a school to go to. So I just, I could keep talking and gushing as to the different ways this impacted kids, but I'll just say thank you very much to you and our administrative staff and our teachers. Thank you.
I guess I'll just add on one other comment, just to say it has been my pleasure and honor to be able, and my delight, in speaking with people all over town and in meetings across the state, to say that here in Orange, our kids went to school all year, and it has been something that we all need to celebrate and give thanks to you, Dr. Scarpetti, and the entire team, and teachers, teaching assistants, everyone in the community who made a difference and stepped up and made it happen. So thank you.
Well, just quick, that Friday, I'm watching the clock, it's hitting like 3 o'clock, and I said, 3:30, I'm going to call Dr. Scarpetti, because we generally speak every Friday. And I waited, and I waited, and then I spoke with him on Saturday morning, and I said to him, I said, I don't know if I've been prouder of a group of people and what they've accomplished than Dr. Scarpetti and his team. And it is, it's something to be proud of, and they did it for all the right reasons. They did it for the kids. That's why we're here, and Dr. Scarpetti gets it, and so does the rest of the team. So, thank you, Doctor.
And on the chance of sounding a little corny, you know, taking the words that we say every month here and what Susan just said a moment ago about together we will make a difference, that's something I've shared in the last letter I wrote to all our parents and our teachers. And again, it's not coming from a place of boasting. Every district was dealt with a different hand. We had to deal with the deck of cards we were given, and we were able to do that. And again, if I may say, just for a moment, I think Mr. Flynn was sharing this. I was at a meeting recently and going around the room, so when is your board going to be back in person? So, as you know, some schools were unfortunate that they had to, whatever challenge they had with social distancing, moving desks, that they had that challenge where they couldn't be in person. But symbolically, you as a board said, listen, if our kids are going to be here, if our staff is going to be here, we're going to be here. And we set up the room that way, six feet apart, masks. If anyone came in, we have it set up downstairs for anyone to come to a public meeting. So again, that goes all around, and I want to thank all of you, too, for your support because more than ever, and you've always been there, but especially during the pandemic, you were there for our kids and our staff. So thank you.
So we, I better put my glasses on because we won't know what we're moving on to. Board business, draft of continuity of services plans, Dr. Scarpetti and Dr. Russo.
Yes. So we shared with the Board and also on the agenda this draft. We are required by the state by this Wednesday to have this posted on our website, which it will be and maybe even before that. This is a fluid document, and it's a template that you've seen before. And so Dr. Russo and I will be going over this and talk about how we've addressed it. But as we talked about in the previous meetings, there's something called ARP-ESR, which is the American Rescue Plan Elementary Secondary School Emergency Relief. So with that, schools have been given funds, and Orange has received approximately $326,000. Just so you know, there's other districts that have received $100 million. So there's a vast difference. That being said, my personal opinion, my personal purview is that when you're giving funds out, there needs to be accountability, as there should be. And we are very grateful for those funds that we've received, but when you're dealing with some guidelines and recommendations to meet some of these requirements, $326,000 does not go a long way. I'm just being honest and frank with the Board and everyone watching home. But that said, we're going to use these funds and do what is required by the state. And one of these requirements is to provide this plan. Again, it hasn't changed much, which I'll go into right now. The one thing that we are calling it a continuity plan versus a fall reopening model, but that's something that they're calling it, we believe we're not reopening. We have been open, and so our focus is called continuity of services. This is a letter that I've addressed, and I know I've shared this prior to all of you, so hopefully you had a moment to read it. So here we are, and one Board member already posed a question prior to the meeting. So here are some guidelines that we received last year, and you'll see cohorting, transportation, face coverings, and social distancing. And some people may say, hey, Vince, why is that still on there? And some parents may ask that, too, because from the beginning, as some of you may have gotten called as a Board member, some, we had some families believe that masks shouldn't be worn at school, and some families that did. Right now, pertaining to these matters, there has not been a decision that's been made from the state. Again, what is it going to look like? I don't know. My hope is that it's going to look much different. My hope is that we don't have to covert students. My hope is that our specialists don't have to be on a cart and going into individual classes that students can move about. My hope is that the kids can go into the cafeteria to eat. There's been conversations, and I don't know where it will lead, because as you know, vaccinations have not been approved for children 12 and under. I don't know if that's going to change before school starts. But that said, we've had a majority of our staff vaccinated, which hopefully will come into play. But for anyone who's seeing this, any parent who's watching, or any Board members questioning saying, hey, Vince, how come this hasn't changed yet? We haven't received information. The state is sharing with us, hopefully mid-July, that will change.
Petti?
Yes, sir.
I can't hear myself, so I hope you can hear me. The Adapt, Advance, Achieve guidance that came out September 4th of the last year is still the current guidance that we have to work with. We have to submit this.
Correct.
But as guidance changes, we can also change.
Correct. One of the requirements, Mr. Vitale, is that every six months, you have to update this plan. We're assuming that we're going to update even sooner than that, because again, if it's, if we get this information in July regarding those matters, we're going to change that right away. But there's a requirement that says every six months, this plan needs to change.
We can change it prior to six months, obviously.
Yeah, I don't see why not.
Okay. So we're hoping that we get some updated direction sometime before the school year, is there?
We are hoping it's, we've been, there's typically a meeting every Tuesday with the State Department of Education, the Department of Public Health. They know the urgency that we have as a school system. All school systems want that information, and so they are hoping to get that out to us mid-July.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Scarpetti.
Again, this goes into detail. One of the things that we will institute, even if it happens to change, we don't see it, is about staying home and feeling, if you're feeling ill again. As we said, we've created a lot of the success to many individuals. The parents really supported us with that. You know, we used to joke in the past that, you know, maybe a parent would give the child sometime a fever reducer, hey, you could make it through the school. They really listened to these guidelines and were honest, and that helped us tremendously avoiding what people thought of just someone just being, having a cold and turning into a positive case of COVID-19. One thing that has changed and that is different is if you look over, I don't have my, this has been announced that we are able to be 100% in-person. As you know, and I think I shared at a previous board meeting, probably back in November, I was at a meeting, because we know that the challenge of having remote learners and what that caused, not only for technical and diagnostic pieces, but also for students, especially at the grade level that we service, that that was a challenge. So we will be 100% in-person next year. Do we have the option to go on remote learning? We do. Let's hope we don't have to use that option, because if we have to use it, it's going to be because a new variant is here and that there's cases that have spiked up for us to do that. Or, and again, we're not there yet, but we'll talk about it. I think the sense I got from our community is that they truly appreciated an official snow day, and I believe we had three official snow days, but then we went to remote learning. But I also think they really appreciated ending school on June 11th and getting out, especially with the temperatures, the way they were in the schools. However, the rest remains. We might, the option of hybrid, depending on how many cases, and again, as I shared with you, that there's high spikes of the transmission. So really, right now, and I know some Board members share this, say, Vince, nothing has really changed so much, and you're absolutely correct. What we were able to change is the 100% in-person, and then what we're about to go into with the continuity of services. Mrs. Hadlock?
I very much appreciate the 100% in-person. Do you think that should be very clearly stated in your letter to the Orange community that there will be?
There will be.
Because this letter is a draft, I understand, but I think that that is an important thing for parents to know, that there will be no option for remote learning. And I don't know how you would state it, but I think that's an important thing to include in your letter to the community.
We agree 100% Mrs. Hadlock, and a letter will be going out to parents. There will be a link to this draft explaining that it's a draft. Again, we're going to explain what Mr. Vitale was queuing in about these mitigating factors.
Right.
But yes, a letter needs to go out. We want to do that. We're also trying to think, because I have to get through some other criterias that we have to abide by, which is shareholder input. But before I get into that, did you have a follow-up question?
No, I was just going to say, I mean, I understand you're going to send this draft out, but I think it should be clearly stated in your letter to the parents and the community in addition to this.
Correct. Right. So what I'm envisioning, Mrs. Hadlock, is not this letter that's a part of it. I'm envisioning a separate letter where you may and other parents have gotten used to where embedded in the letter is a link to this document. But in that letter that they see coming from the Orange Public Schools email, is a letter stating that we are in 100% in-person for Fall '21-'22, or the academic '21-'22.
There should be no ambiguity about the fact that remote is not an option.
Thank you.
Folks, let's let Dr. Scarpetti get through his presentation. We'll ask, we can ask all kinds of questions after, okay? Let him stay on track, please.
So this is all similar information that has been sent out before about a compliance liaison, and this is the part that I wanted to get to with regarding, there is a stressed, not stressed, but a stressing of the statement of shareholder, stakeholder input. You may recall when we were addressed last year about, are we going to do a reopening committee? Who's going to be a part of it? I think, again, credit to the Board and their guidance. We had an established foundation. I remember six years ago, sitting with some of our Board members, we revamped our subcommittees and kind of, I think when I first came in, there were seven or eight, I believe, and we narrowed it down so over we narrowed it down, so overlapping. In addition to that, we also created something called the PTO Council. And so we had strong foundations established to include stakeholder feedback. And what we did is used what we had in addition to including other people. So I joke with, for example, all of you, but also my parents who are part of PTO Council, that we're putting on a different app. You're not a PTO Council president anymore, and now you're part of the Continuity Service Committee, or back then, the Reopening Plan Committee. We had a meeting with our Continuity of Service/PTO Council this past week. I shared this document with them so they could read. But also, what I shared with them is that amount, $326,000. I shared what I shared with all of you. We are grateful for getting that amount of money. However, I truly believe the districts that are receiving a lot more need to answer how they're going to spend $100 million, $1 million. Some of the things that we were proactive on, which I shared with this committee in past board meetings, is number one, we jumped in advance to hire permanent subs for the whole entire year. Prior to the pandemic, we had challenges. And again, as a board, or you as a board and as us as leaders, we sat, we talked about Kelly's service. We talked, that was way before the pandemic. But because of your support, we hired permanent subs for that year, and that saved us. Forget about the 3% of districts that started in person, five days a week. There were districts that may have done that or didn't do that, but they couldn't stay open because personnel were impacted either by contracting the virus or being a contact to someone, and they didn't have enough staff. So one of the things that we are going to be doing, which I shared with those members and all of you, is that we need to hire more permanent subs. One is to make sure our buildings are open, but two, what we realize is when people are out, and as you know, many people are out, is that when we had staff out, we had to borrow, right? So if we had students receiving interventions, and we had to pull that staff, so they had to do a classroom, interventions were not being met. So we want to make sure we adhere to that. So that's something we share. In addition, Dr. Russo will be talking about the continuity of services, which was a strong suggestion by the state to have a summer school. We've talked about that, not just academic, but something fun for students, and Dr. Russo. So when you look at that, it narrows the money down of what we have left. We don't have that number for you yet. In addition, and again, and we'll be talking in a moment on another agenda item, is about enrollment. We want to make sure, and to give a precursor of what I'm going to share with the board, right now, we know more people are going to enroll to our schools. Numbers haven't changed since last month, but we know that people are in the queue of enrolling, and we want to make sure funds, if we need to hire another teacher, we have funds for that. So when you're a district like ours, who receives a smaller amount of money, but you need to receive shareholder information, there may be little, but we want to be open and receive advice from any of our board members, because you're considered a part of this Continuity of Service Committee, any of our parents on the list of people on this. But in addition to this, I know we appreciate feedback, and we always welcome feedback. But I know when this was sent out last year, some people felt like, oh, there's only, there's only three teachers on there, there's only these parents on there. But what we used each person in this role as a funneling system to these meetings. And that, Betty, the reason why you queued me in is about being very clear about in person. We also want to be clear about how they could communicate. And we will be open if, some of the things I just mentioned to you, that if someone has an idea that is something more valuable than what we mentioned, permanent subs, the continuity of services during the summer, we want to be open to it. But I also want to be very frank with everyone, $326,000 does not go a long way, but we have to be ready to use that money and answer and require what the state is providing. Again, we do have some new PTO presidents, which were on this list when you took a look. And this is all the same that we pointed out. But again, the last thing that's different, I'm going to ask Dr. Russo to come up here, is the continuity of services regarding the summer. She's going to do a summary of this, but you have all the detailed information that we already sent to you. But Dr. Russo, if you don't mind coming up. So if you don't, if you want to use this, you could just use that.
Good evening. So this part is new, the continuity of services, and we're going to start these services with summer learning. And we did speak about summer learning a little bit at the last board meeting. As Dr. Scarpetti said, you'll be able to read everything in here. The SRBI process is listed here. Oh, my gosh, what did I do? Listed here before. What did I do? Can you fix that? Oh, wait, here, no, here it is. I'm going to go down here, right? I think so. Okay, all right. So here's the summer learning, summer learning portion. And we just want to highlight what we hope to accomplish during summer learning. We have several differentiated sessions that have been created to address a variety of student needs. For example, hands-on contextualized experiences in STEM or science, technology, engineering, and math, opportunities for physical health and well-being, creative writing opportunities, review of grade-level math concepts, and opportunities to close gaps, review grade-level reading, and then reading to close gaps. We also want to extend the school year for our students receiving special education services. We have a special program for our English language learners. And we also screened 120 incoming kindergarteners and were able to identify some students who would benefit from some reading readiness prior to coming into the kindergarten year. So, for example, those students who are very attached to their moms and, you know, were crying and were not really used to school experiences because with COVID, they hadn't experienced preschool. And so we would like them to come in so that in the summer, they practice for the fall, and they walk in with more confidence, and we create conditions of success. And simultaneously, we would like to voluntarily ask families to engage in a research study that would answer some very critical questions about early reading, specifically phoneme awareness. And we did include this in the May board update. And those two questions are, do students need to have acquired syllable awareness in order to acquire phoneme awareness? And Mr. Ziman would want me to define what phoneme awareness is. It is a critical, critical and necessary part of reading acquisition, and it's perceiving the sounds in spoken words. And that is something we take for granted, but it really helps us read and spell. So that's one of the questions. And the second is, will students being taught syllable and rhyme improve on those skills and on letter knowledge, but not acquire phoneme awareness? So we would have some information that would help us be even more efficient when the kindergarten year begins. And as I said, that's voluntary, and we'll send some information out to those kindergarten parents. So for summer learning, there's a lot of flexibility with timing, and I think I mentioned this at the last board member, last board meeting, but just to repeat, we have sessions that are 8:30 to 9:30. We have sessions 9:30 to 10:30, you know, so somebody can come for one hour, two hours, three hours. So lots of flexibility built in there. And we have 50 minutes for each session. And as we said, it's Monday through Thursday, all at Peck Place School because of the air conditioning. So in addition to flexibility, the programming has been very intentional. I have to say, our team looked at every single student. We looked at needs, whether they're on grade level or approaching, designed classes for those, but in addition, looked at their interests in addition to their needs, and we made sure that everyone had at least one interest. So they had an opportunity, students, to sign up for camp invention, for math, for enriching, for art. And they're not just any old classes. They've been really thought through well, and we're excited about that. We even asked some of the girls that don't or didn't sign up for things like engineering and science, we actually made some phone calls and asked them if they would consider, because that is a population where you don't have a lot of females in those fields. And we wanted to have these courses be accessible to populations that are often underserved. So the women in math and science was one of those areas. Any student who is receiving Tier Two and Tier Three services, in addition to the interventions and remedial classes, we did ask them to also consider the enrichment classes. So we have lots of students experiencing the enrichment. Communications, we really want to thank parents for their patience with us for this, because it's taken a long time to develop programming at this level. So we have sent some follow-up emails, we've answered phone calls, we've made phone calls, and we hope to share with every parent who signed up the exact programming, if not by tomorrow, the next day. That's almost done. Our methods are small group instruction for the interventions, and then a little bit larger for the at-grade level, but they're still small classes. The largest are like for camp invention, where we have two big groups, K through two, and then three through five. But we have those staffed really well, and it's fun for kids to be with some peers that are a little bit younger and a little bit older. So really, all of the resources and the specifics are included in this plan. So you can see, as Dr. Scarpetti said, I just wanted to summarize, but as you can see on the screen, this is like all the information, all the details. Now, after summer learning for the continuity of services, we do plan to always update our scientific research-based instruction intervention process, and you can read about this here, too, reviewing and updating our universal screens, our progress monitoring tools, and the interventions. Restructuring some of the intervention systems in some of the schools, and as Dr. Scarpetti said, hiring additional district substitute teachers so that those reading and math aides that we train to provide these services are available and not covering other classes. Providing and continuing to provide onsite context-embedded training to our reading aides, our kindergarten classroom aides, because they've really supported the process, and our special education paraprofessionals and our English learner aides. And I think that's about it.
I think it's nice, and as I shared, with the funds that we have from this ARP-ESR grant is going directly, there's no cost appearance at all, and the response that we've had, quite frankly, I don't think we would have had that same response if there was a cost appearance. So here it is in action, what the intent of that grant is to be used for is being used, and it's providing continuity of services, which is the intention of those, for those
Any questions for Dr. Scarpetti? Go ahead.
I just have one question of, how many, about how many students do we have in total in the summer program?
So there's about 300 students, and again, that is K to six. Again, something we typically do that's not part of this grant is our extended school year, that's for our students with special needs.
I just want to say thank you for putting together such a wonderful program that lets every student be involved in some way, and also that the students who are receiving academic support have the opportunity to participate in the other activities as well. And I think I heard Dr. Scarpetti say at the beginning that you're still looking for instructors, and did I misinterpret that?
Personally, I think for the summer, we are, but we're also, you meant during the summer, Mrs. Hadlock?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so you could give an update with regards to that.
We're almost there, but, you know, we're open to, if you know anybody else who's interested, to contact us.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Ken.
I also wanted to mention the survey that you conducted, that you sent home to the parents to find out regarding their, the needs and interests of the children, so you could include that. And I mention that only because I thought it was terrific. There was a sentence in there about the fact that the results were going to be given back to the, to the parents that contributed. And I think it's important that the parents understand that we appreciate their input, and this serves a purpose.
Thank you, Mr. Ziman. And that helped us with the programming. There were certain areas that we couldn't accommodate this summer, but we at least accommodated one or two for every single student.
Anyone else? Kim? No? Charles?
For your hard work on this. This was just one question on the public comment part, because if I, I think I understand where this is going, but the dates that are listed there are things that have already had public comment on the first version of this, because they're all last in the past, I'm assuming.
Right. So again, part of, I'm sorry, my brain was getting to where you were coming from, Mr. Flynn. So, yeah, so with the amount of public that's happened in the past, we want to show to the state that we've included all these stakeholders, and that since this is a fluid document, we will continue to do so. And like I said, we're extremely grateful for the funds. And again, we're open for any suggestions, but when you narrow it down, like, for example, we have not finalized the cost of this summer program. And start, and with regards to this, you know, about how many people, again, that's talking about, for example, there's a nurse there for the whole entire day. You know, you have to kind of think as a, a minimum release day, let's say, of making sure that we have all those supports. But yes, to your point, Mr. Flynn, those are just showing the state, because this goes to the state to be submitted, that we have and previously have continually involved stakeholder input.
No, thank you. And I, I think you were more diplomatic than I would be when it comes to the, the sharing of some of these funds, because I, similar to the educational cost sharing of the state, it doesn't look like the federal government did us any favors with the, with a fair share for our town. And I just, I just say that a bit out of frustration, because you would think, after the performance of this district this year, that this would have been one of the most highly funded towns. And it doesn't seem like it is, even though we're a small district. So that's just a personal note, I'm not speaking for the board there, but that's incredibly frustrating. But I thank you for your work on this, and I guess we'll be discussing it as the summer progresses.
If I may, Mr. Flynn, I think, just to extend a thought that you're sharing on your own behalf, there were categories here, right, as they do to guide districts, and these were the five categories. Number one was learning acceleration, academic renewal, and student enrichment. Second one was family and community connections. Third, social, emotional, and mental health of the students, of the school, and staff. Fourth, strategic use of technology, staff development, and the digital divide. And then last, building safe and healthy schools. So when you look at those five areas, you know, with 326,000, to the point I was trying to make, and again, with the utmost gratitude that we are receiving funds, it's very difficult to hit all those, all those areas, per se, versus, okay, what do we have in front of us, and we know what we've learned in the past. So. So I know you're only speaking on your behalf, but I would have to agree with you.
But we're excited that at least our stakeholders were able to choose some of the subjects and, subjects and areas for summer learning. And we are happy to say that we were able to accommodate everybody's, every stakeholder's request.
And I think we may have shared this in the past, maybe even a subcommittee meeting. Even when we received these funds and knew the amount, we actually called the state and asked if, if this was number one, correct. And number two, if we could actually receive more, more funds, and we'll substantiate it with any criteria that we need to. Unfortunately, that did not work out as we tried, but it was worth making those phone calls.
Else for Dr. Russo or Dr. Scarpetti? Go ahead, Betty.
Yeah, I just had one question about the Continuity of Services Committee. And this is my own ignorance. I see there are four teachers, and I presume that that means there's one from each school. But I don't know that, so.
No, I appreciate the question, Mrs. Hadlock, because again, even with our best intentions, I think there could be some misinterpretation. I alluded a little bit in the past, like, you know, why are these parents asked, or why are these teachers asked? And what we intended to do is use our staff and parents that have contributed know that they could do that. So again, using that example of the PTO council parents. But that does not mean if you are a PTO president, MLT, she's the only voice. And this letter that we are using, and again, it's going to be very similar to the letter that we've used in the past, they know all these PTO presidents email to reach out. Conversely, if you notice, maybe some names on the teacher list are familiar to the board, because that's OTL. So typically, we collaborate with them. And again, the OTL president happens to be on there. So if there's any concerns, email. So that was the intention. It seemed to work out in the past, especially when we had larger funds. And again, using those funds, as you may recall, for the ventilation and buying PPE and everything else, it needed to be clarified. So we are hoping the voice of those people on this list will assist that. But if you could envision a funneling system of those are the people, because we want to have structure, and we want to have organization, but we want voices to be heard. One of the things I've also shared at that meeting on Friday, we're, we're looking to create an email. So on that letter, that specifically says 100% in person, that talks about here are the people that you could reach and contact. And again, they could email myself, they could email Dr. Russo, they could email the principal. But we also want to put an email for them to share these pieces. I just don't want anyone to think or feel like, hey, Vince, why are you even doing this? You're saying there's not enough money. And it seems like, you know, where you're spending money and word. It's almost counterintuitive of what the state wants you to do. That is not true. The state wants us to have continuing service over the summer. We are doing that. I don't think anyone would argue that. And as I shared earlier, if there's someone who has a thought or a plan that maybe not even used for the 326,000, but even for future use, we want to hear from them. And I believe systems have been created. We are open for any additional systems that our community or any of our board members feel that could be created to get additional feedback. But we believe that it's worked very well in the past, and are open to any feedback, too.
Okay, so I don't know that. My question is, there are four teachers listed. They're not necessarily all from a different school. I mean, I don't know.
These are the OTL representatives.
Oh, all right. I guess my own feeling is, as a teacher, a retired teacher, it's very nice to have someone in the building that you can go and reach out to for any kind of, you know, question that you might have. And I guess that's why I was under the assumption these people were all in different buildings.
You know, let me just check, Mrs. Hadlock, if there's any additional questions. I'm curious if by chance, if they are. I don't think they are, though, Mrs. Hadlock. Yeah. So your points well taken, Mrs. Hadlock, and we'll be happy to look at that.
Speaking as a retired teacher, and when you can go to a colleague and ask questions and not have to go through all sorts of other rigmarole, it's helpful.
Thank you.
Is for Dr. Russo or Dr. Scarpetti? Very well. Thank you, doctor. Okay, we will move on to discussion of policy 3240, tuition and fees. Is it gonna, are you gonna, you gonna do it?
Mr. Crowe, or would you like Mrs. Brough? Whichever you prefer.
Go ahead, Mrs. Brough.
I will take the opportunity to say I love these links embedded in the agenda. That is very nice, to be able to just pop right over to the policy. So the policy, the tuition policy, just directs us to set the tuition rate for those employees who choose to enroll their children in Orange schools. And our policy says that the tuition credit will be no less than 50%, but we have the opportunity to set what that actually would be.
Do you know what that number is currently?
It's $18,046. If someone was, wanted to have their child attend Orange Public Schools, so 15, that's about $9,000.
Okay. Do we have any participants?
We did last year. We currently don't have anyone. That's the first time at least since my tenure that we've had someone. But I believe this was not even a policy prior to my arrival. This is a discussion we have.
No, I think this is relatively new, right? Mrs. Brough? Yeah. And it also, were you raising your hand, Charles? I also believe it, it's inclusive of staff who may have, who actually may live out of the town. Is that correct? Like Derby or something? Okay. All right. That was my question. Anyone else have any questions for Dr. Scarpetti on this? I'm sorry. I can't.
The policy reads it's certified teachers and administrators.
Take action on this? Or the policy says 50%. Even if it, if it moves to 19 or 20, it still would be 50% of whatever that is.
Don't we have to approve it?
Right. It's not the, so, so it's not the, right? Like, yeah, I don't know. I know that makes me doubt, because, so we have set the policy that the credit is no less than 50%. And I think what we did in the past is that Dr. Scarpetti just made a proposal of what it would be for the next year.
So we continue to want to stick with the 50%. So with my proposal to honor what it currently says, which is 50%.
Agree with that unless, Mrs. Brough, does your committee, or Betty, do you have something?
No, I'm just gonna say, I guess we just have to say that that's okay, right?
Yeah, we don't need to take action.
It says no, no less than 50%. It doesn't say 50%, no less than.
Okay. All right. Just, go ahead.
I thought that we had discussed this at the meeting, and that we could have lowered it. Isn't amity's different? Wasn't amity's lower?
In my memory, it was 35%.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we have to do anything about it now. But I, I think that we looked at possibly lowering it if it comes up. I mean, it doesn't matter if nobody's going to use it. But I suppose we could look into it.
We're talking about how much of a credit we would give staff or administrators. We want to give them a 50% credit, so half off, as opposed to 35% off.
No, 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 no. They pay 35%. So they have a 65% credit.
They're only paying 35% remedy. That I don't think I recognized. Okay.
I mean, we could double-check that, but I know that, at my last look, that is what it was.
Oh, minute to have 50%? I don't think we need to take action. But if there's a discussion in personnel policy that you may want to lower it or raise it, then by all means, have it.
You had any feedback? I mean, has there been any discussion at all? Any whispers about, like, you know, I would do it if?
Not at this time, Mrs. Brough. I think, and this is my own personal opinion, I think because of the pandemic and the situation facing that specific employee, it helped that teacher out. And I think that's why it was open. But we haven't gotten anything. Again, this was a request by a teacher to do something like this, and we did. And again, appreciate the board supporting a policy such as to support a teacher. But even that teacher, after being informed that there is a policy, did not have her own children attend Orange.
Other questions or comments? All right. Discussion class size. Dr. Scarpetti?
So to continue the conversations that we've had and discussions, I want to share, and again, this is a document that has been shared in the past. I know I've stated there are some classrooms, depending on where students may fall. And we do expect students to enroll. So there's about four classes that we're specifically keeping an eye on, depending on where the enrollment falls. I want to restate to the board that if, for example, the number of kindergarten students remain at 150, that's an avenue that I will pursue and look at to move that FTE from kindergarten to another section if need be. Again, that would give about 16, 17 students in the kindergarten class with a full-time aide servicing them. Again, that was support, another, some, another element we implemented during the pandemic, and we're continuing to support our kindergarten students. So that's that option. And as I shared when we were doing the continuity of services, we are making sure that we have funds in case we have to hire another teacher. I know there's discussion, and again, we share the policy again for all of you to see. And I know we've talked, especially when other districts that are like Orange that has classes with 24, 25 students. I do want to share that there's no question in my mind that our teachers can handle 24, 25 students. We had it this year in one of our schools. That said, there's going to be a domino effect that we need to be ready for, depending if it goes higher, depending on those needs of the individual students in that class. But also what the questions I received earlier about the mitigating factors, quite honestly. If that impacts the dimensions of a classroom, and again, I'm hoping it won't. I'm hoping that, quite frankly, that we could put students together like we used to. I don't know that yet. But if it's about having a strict guideline about social distancing, that will also impact us.
Dr. Scarpetti on class size? Charles?
No, thank you, Mr. Crowe. And thank you for sharing this, Dr. Scarpetti. And I believe you alluded to earlier in your presentation at the board tonight that you were, and I don't know if this is the time when you're alluding to possible additional teachers. That wouldn't be adding any. That would just be filling what we already have. I think the board is familiar. Our earlier workshop, I was concerned particularly, although it's the superintendent's discretion, the third, third grade at Turkey Hill for one of our younger grades remains pretty high. And I believe it's the highest average class size of any class in the district. So I understand that, you know, I think the board has heard from some parents on this already. So, you know, I certainly respect the superintendent's discretion, but I just would ask the chairman's consideration that we could, I believe we're meeting in July, to, to see this class size again, because such a young grade with such a high, you know, one of the highest averages in the district is a concern for me.
I have one question. Mr. Flynn, were you referring to the current third grade that will be fourth grade? Because that, we...
So this is always challenging for a colorblind person, so I...
This is that you're speaking of third grade at Turkey Hill, which currently their third grade had that, but next year they will be fourth graders. So they're a little bit older, which we had always discussed that it's a little bit easier.
Yes, so I believe, I believe Ms. Riccio is, is correct with the class that I was, I was referring to, that I, this year's, this year's third, next year's fourth. Between my lack of glasses and my, my trouble with colors, but she described, I think, what I was trying to describe more accurately.
Questions? With respect to your request, for the most part, I think we touch on, not formally, it may not be on our agenda every meeting, class size. And we get an update every month. But at your request, I have no problem in putting this on the agenda for the next meeting. Dr. Scarpetti can update us. And, and it, go ahead. I can assure the board that these numbers are on Dr. Scarpetti's radar, and he is in constant contact with his administrators and people talking about it. And if there's a need, Dr. Scarpetti will fill it, as we will support it. So, but I have no problem with putting it on the agenda. Just, Mary, remind me, we want to do that, please? Any other questions for Dr. Scarpetti on class size? All right, now we're going to move on to the July meeting. A little torn about this. Dr. Scarpetti and I both thought that the July meeting might be a good idea. But there are a number of conflicts for board members already. And I understand that plans were made well in advance, and no one has really gone anywhere in about a year and a half. So what I'd like to do is, let's, 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 let's cancel the July 19th meeting. And between myself, Mr. Cap, and Ms. Riccio, and Dr. Scarpetti, we'll take a good, hard look at what may be coming up on that agenda, because we can always call a special meeting. It doesn't have to be on the 19th. We can call it on July 28th, or wherever the case may be. And hopefully, we can hold that and slide right to the August meeting. If anything comes up with something like class size, or something where there needs to be something done, we can certainly do that. So it is my suggestion that we cancel the July 19th meeting. I'd like to hear comments on that. I know Susan's disappointed, so I'm not going to ask her.
I thought in an earlier discussion we had at an earlier board meeting, we had said we would have a July meeting, and we would not have an August meeting. And, I mean, maybe I misunderstood, but in my own mind, if then you're going to call a special meeting at some other date, that seems to me to cause more problems.
Well, if we were to call a special meeting, Mary would do a, was it a doodle? Doodle? Is that what it's called? Do a doodle. We've done it before in the past. And I would be a little uneasy about canceling the August meeting, simply because it's two weeks before school comes in. So hopefully, you know, everything's smooth sailing, and we don't even need to have that meeting, but that option's there.
Have you checked to see what conflicts people have in August? I know you've, I think you mentioned people have conflicts in July, but I've heard a bunch of people say they have conflicts in August, so.
Well, I've heard more about July. I don't know about August, but I, we also can't accommodate every conflict. July seems to be, July seems to be the month where most people seem to want to get away or have a long weekend here and there.
And dear, I hate to say it, but I guess we could always have a Zoom meeting. And dear, I hate to say it, but I guess we could always have a Zoom meeting.
No, we can't. I'm not even, we're not going to even vote on that one. But do we need to take action to cancel the July 19th meeting, or do we just strike it from, we're good?
We didn't have to.
We didn't before, I didn't think we did.
We didn't have to vote to add it, because we had taken the July out in the past.
Yep.
And so we don't need to, you added it last month in saying that we're going to keep July in.
Okay.
But we've always kept August in.
Okay.
So you shouldn't have to vote, no.
All right. Any other discussion on that? I know, okay. All right, so July meeting. Okay, superintendent's evaluation, we will be going, Dr. Scarpetti, you would like to go into executive session for that, is that correct? So we will be going to executive session for that. I should have read this earlier. A quick note from Mary Wheelander to the entire Board of Education. Please forgive me for the lateness of this card. While this is just getting to you, please know I have thought of you all and the work you have been doing often. Thank you so much for the thoughtful and generous parting gifts. They were not necessary, but very much appreciated. I hope you are all in good health. Congratulations on finishing out this challenging year. Thank you again. All the best. Mary Wheelander. Okay. Standing committees. Finance, Ms. Riccio.
Yes, finance met prior to this meeting. Those of you who have read through the financial statement saw that we have a slightly different format for finances. They're a little bit more in a summary form, we're seeing, it seems to be more consistent with other towns are doing, as well as the fact that we passed a budget that has all the line items in it. Now we should be managing to those numbers. And so this seems to work better. We're trying this out with Munis, and we'll see how it goes. So we met prior, just as a note, is we are tracking to a break even position, which is the whole goal, is that we're neither significantly above or below, which is where we are at. One thing to note that payroll has, let me back up a second. So most people in school has the option of doing a 10-month or a 12-month payout on their salary. So if you have a 12-month payout of your salary, that would mean that in June, you get a balloon payment. So if you looked at the finances, you would have seen we'd only expended about 80% of our salary dollars, because the balloon payment for their other two months of pay would be coming out in this month. So if there's any questions on that, I figured I would address that ahead of time. All other numbers are in order. The only one thing to note is that cafeteria continues to have a loss, and it was still larger than we had anticipated without COVID, but actually less, I'll say less bad, if that makes sense. So, but we're still, those numbers are still included in our overall dollars, so we're still doing a break even. And just a quick note on 21st Century, there was a question last month about whether or not we were raising rates for 21st Century for next year. We are not. There is, the good news is that quite a few people have already signed up for 21st Century. So if there's parents watching and they're interested, there are slots available in 21st Century at all three schools. There are forms online on our website. If you have any questions, let us know. But we are going to be operating in full right now. We have, currently, we have enough numbers to run it at all three schools, and if there's additional people, we'll have additional staff. Just another note on 21st Century, we did operate at a loss this year. Again, we tried to break even, because it's obviously a nonprofit as well. And so even though we did operate at a loss, we did not raise prices this year. So just a heads up on that. And I think that's it for finance.
Questions for Ms. Riccio? Go ahead, Ken.
Can I just ask what the loss was? How much?
Which, for cafeteria or 21st?
21st.
I don't have those exact numbers. We are meeting this, either this week or next week on those numbers, and I can share them with you. Sure.
So, and that is, you know, on the, I remember Ms. Hadlock had asked at the last meeting whether or not we were going to raise rates, and when should we as a board have that discussion as to whether or not we're going to address the rates of 21st Century?
Well, we're meeting, as I said, either this week or next week with 21st Century to look at a lot of those numbers, and we'll discuss it for the following year. The board would be involved in that. They'll make a, what normally happens is that 21st Century makes a recommendation, and we as a board discuss it and either accept or reject.
Got it. I was just looking forward to that board discussion.
We've done that before.
Anything else for Ms. Riccio? Very well, thank you. Who do we have next? Personnel, Mrs. Brow, please.
The Personnel Policy and Transportation Meeting took Memorial Day off, so did not meet in May. There is a policy that's sort of floating out there now with the leadership team for homework policy, and that will be more of a philosophical statement. I would like the committee to meet prior to the August meeting, since we are not going to have a July meeting, it does not have to occur next Monday, but we do need to get some, you know, revisit some, more of those policies that Cabe identified in the audit. So I will defer to Mr. Ziman when he would like curriculum to meet, and we can schedule a joint meeting.
For Mrs. Brow? Buildings and grounds, Mr. Flynn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Buildings and grounds subcommittee met on June 14th at Turkey Hill. Board members might remember that we tried to circulate through each of our schools in our regular meetings, and this was Turkey Hill's turn. We did get to see the relatively newly constructed loading dock at Turkey Hill, which unfortunately was damaged, but is in the process of being repaired, and that'll be taking part by the insurance company of the party responsible. We also wanted to extend our thanks to the town and to Mr. Zioli and Fire Marshal Vincent for their help in, I believe it's repair, replacing a fire hydrant that was near Turkey Hill there. And we had a presentation by Mr. Gray about opportunities to improve the Orange Elementary School's security. Particularly, his presentation focused on qualifications, responsibilities, roles, and licensing of personnel. He kind of shared some, an overview of what number of districts, I believe he looked at over 16 districts, are doing, and kind of found that there were kind of three different stages. One being a SRO, which is a School Resource Officer, which is typically a certified police officer. Another being a, Mr. Ziman's going to zap, zing me here with another acronym, but a SSO, which is perhaps a step below a certified police officer, but might have been a retired police officer. And then a third option, which some districts had, which was known as the Connecticut Guard Card as well. We had some last-minute absences, so we're going to try to catch those subcommittee members up on that presentation. I believe that's forthcoming from Mr. Gray to those subcommittee members. Mr. Gray also shared a little bit about the stepping up ceremonies. I was able to attend one in person, but a lot of extended family members, both in my case and across the district, were able to tune in and livestream, and that was really neat. Extended family members were also allowed to bring some chairs and seat in a more distant area. I can speak just having seen the Peck Place one, but what a great send-off from the Orange Elementary Schools. It reminded me kind of full circle, a number of years ago, you may remember, Principal Lasto introduced a kindergarten graduation, very neat idea where the graduates come into the ceremony with their kindergarten teacher, and then they leave going out with their respective Turkey Hill, Peck Place, or Racebrook District. So he wanted to make sure that we thanked both the Castilla and the tech staff, because people were able to livestream those ceremonies who could not have been there as well, so I would like to echo his sentiments there. We are exploring the anchoring system of some of our solar panels, and those are being assessed. Turkey Hill and Racebrook are presently being cleaned and prepped. There is, I believe, another scheduled filter change. As you know, we've been doing that regularly during the pandemic. There are a couple of ventilation units that are near, maybe at the end of their useful lifetime and have been troublesome, and Mr. Gray is exploring whether those can be addressed or whether they need to be replaced. So you, the general board might be made aware of a need there, depending on what the results of his investigation found out. You may recall the other subcommittees were using kind of a form for their kind of long-term planning work. Mr. Gray has drafted a pretty comprehensive plan, and it's in a draft mode, but I think we believe that we'd be able to share that with the general board in August or September. And a big piece of his work is really trying to change the nature of what a lot of his job has been, where we are being reactive to a lot of problems and being able to be a little bit more proactive in addressing some of our aging structures for that. We had set a tentative placeholder for changing our, we typically try to meet the Monday before the general board. We had set a tentative placeholder for July 19th, which I think may, might now be eliminated if there's not a general board meeting. September, or excuse me, August 23rd, we are hoping to, in lieu of a formal meeting, unless one is necessary, to tour the schools before opening. We'll be meeting on September 13th and tentatively October 12th as well. Just a couple of other side notes. First, I, just speaking on my own, you know, personal view with ventilation, just to note that we did have school, three straight days of early dismissal due to higher temperatures, and I noted that Dr. Russo mentioned the decision to have summer school at Peck. I just share my own personal belief, I do believe Racebrook and Turkey Hill could be benefited from air conditioning. One other note that I just noticed in some of our other town bodies that could eventually have impact on our work, but I believe development near the Firelight Plaza has cleared another hurdle, which if my understanding is correct, could be as many as 72 units of living space, so that would certainly have a major impact, and would certainly, depending on the nature of how that proceeds, certainly guide some of our work with buildings and grounds. I also want to, again, Dr. Scarpetti mentioned this in his comments earlier, what a tremendous community job has taken place here to open the schools fully this year. I think I can speak for everybody in Buildings and Grounds as just how proud we are of Dr. Scarpetti, Mr. Gray, and I also want to acknowledge the work of Dr. Mohammed, and also the parents in the district who are often asked to bring their students to school and try to accommodate that. I think, again, for a small community, my own personal belief, one that does not always necessarily get the state or federal funding that it should, I think it was a tremendous, tremendous accomplishment, and I wish everyone a happy summer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Questions for Mr. Flynn? Very well. Oh, the moment we've all been waiting for all night. Curriculum, Mr. Ziman.
Just to set the record straight, I don't, I don't have a problem with an acronym as long as they're defined. Which brings me, of course, to the convault at Turkey Hill, which of course means oil tank. I don't, I have no idea. Leyden Industries is going to remove that at no charge to us. That's great. Do we thank them? Is that, or how was that done? I'm sorry, I should have brought it up earlier, but I, you were on a roll, and so I...
So yes, there was, it happened, happenstance. So one of the vendors who was working on the dock mentioned that, was asking if something that's, we would want to get conversation started with the conversation with Mr. Kraut and Mr. Flynn, were saying it's going to have to be removed at some point, and at no charge would be great. So yes, thank you for them. I don't know quite exactly why they would take it for free. I'm sure they're using it and resourcing it in another, in another way, but yes, that is true, Mr. Ziman.
That's great. Okay. Regarding curriculum, we didn't have a full agenda, and Dr. Russo offered to step in and incorporate it into her talk, which she did. So I made an executive decision, and we didn't have a meeting.
Dr. Russo stole your thunder again?
Yes, well, you know, that's funny, because last month I had a wonderful speech, and it was perfect, because everybody was able to take pieces, so.
Any questions for Mr. Ziman? Okay. ACES, Ms. Riccio?
Great news. So you all know that ACES does services in schools, right, and other things. So one of the magnet schools, which happened to be Thomas Edison Magnet School, which was originally in a Meriden building. The Meriden building, unfortunately, the town of Meriden wanted it back, which seems reasonable. So ACES was kind of scrambling to find a building for this magnet school. And so most of this year, you know, from the, and towards the end of last year till the beginning of this year, we've been looking for a place, and we found this fantastic location in Waterbury. It was priorly, prior, priorly, that's not a word. It was prior, previously known as, thank you, I knew there was a word in there. It was previously known as Chase Collegiate, and it was a private school that went from pre, from kindergarten to like 12th grade. Well, unfortunately for Chase Collegiate, they closed last year. And so ACES has been negotiating to see if we could use that particular, I can't even say building, it's a huge facility, it's a beautiful campus. And so I'm happy to announce that ACES at Chase will be opening in September, and I'll pass this information around. We just had our press conference, I think it was June 8th. So it was formerly, as I said, it was formerly Thomas Edison Magnet School, and it was a STEM school. It will now be a STEAM school. There's currently a ballet theater and a stage, and there's athletic buildings, and there are science buildings, and there's regular academic classes, and the best part is that it is just beautiful. And the facility is open for enrollment. Anybody in the state of Connecticut can send their child there for free, because it's a magnet school, it's a public school. So it's one of the first schools, private schools in Connecticut that is being converted from a private school to a public school, whereas in the past, they've gone backwards, they've gone from public to private. This is a, one of the first that we know of in Connecticut that's gone private to public. And so at our press conference was the mayor of Waterbury, and Tom Danahue, who's the director of ACES, and some of the attorneys that did it, and the guy who was the receiver who was holding all the financial documents stuff. But also Johanna Hayes was there, and she's considering sending her son there. But she better hurry up, because we already have 715 students enrolled, and the school will only accommodate 800. So we're excited. It's a middle school, and I'm really excited about it, and if you get a chance, take a look at it, it's just beautiful. Yes, Betty?
So middle school, you're saying it's grades, what?
Uh, six...
Five to eight, or six to eight?
Six, seven, eight.
Six, seven, eight.
Mm-hmm.
And how is that information communicated to our local students who would not, maybe not know that there's an opportunity to go to a fabulous magnet STEAM school?
Part of it is through, well, the ACES representatives at each district is supposed to get that out, which, of course, I've mentioned it to you guys that we were finding one, and so it's here. It was also in a couple of the newspapers in Waterbury, in Meriden, to reassure families, because the, when it was in Meriden, there was a lot more students in Meriden and Hamden going. Many of those students are still going, but it's only about 50 to 60% of them, there's numbers in Waterbury are a lot higher. They had an open house... There's numbers in Waterbury are a lot higher. They had an open house, actually prior to the press conference, and they had something like 200 families stop by. So they've been doing it, kind of that, they've advertised in Oxford, Beacon Falls, so, you know, any of the Valley schools don't really have too many Magnet Schools around them. So, it is a possibility, not to take anything away from any of our schools, but it is a great opportunity, and it's, it's not a lottery.
Right, well, especially since it's now an arts school, too.
Yes, yes. It's science, engineering, technology, arts, math, I think, so, yeah, we're excited. So I have information, if you guys are interested in, I'll pass it this way for the time. So there's information, and then that. The other piece of it is that ACES is also in a break even position, have a slight surplus. We'll know more at the end of this month where we sit exactly. We're already starting the edit, the audit, edit, the audit, and they're already getting started to make sure that they're on time. So, that is everything.
Any questions for Ms. Riccio? Very well. Okay, I am looking for a motion to enter into executive session. Dr. Scarpetti, will you, would you like to join us? Anyone else? That's it? Just Dr. Scarpetti? So I need a motion to enter into executive session with Dr. Scarpetti. Do I have a motion? Susan, do I have a second? Ken, any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstained, we are in executive session? Very well, we are back. Susan, would you please read the motion that is on the floor?
Yes, based on the- Based on the board's positive review of Dr. Vince Scarpetti, I am looking for, sorry, I am making a motion to modify terms and extend Dr. Scarpetti's contract for one additional year with the modifications completed by the Executive Board.
Anyone care to make the motion? Betty?
I just made it.
Do we have a second?
I just made it, though.
You did? I'm sorry. So, Betty's second?
Yeah.
Any, any, any discussion? All in favor?
Yeah, that's good.
Opposed, abstained, very well, motion carries. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting at 9:42. Susan?
Yeah.
Ken?
Yeah.
Sorry, Charles.
Already had it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous, thank you.
Opposed, abstained, very well, we are adjourned at 9:42, Ms. Riccio. Thank you.